So let me call the September regular board meeting. The Tippecanoe Board of Education to order. And let me introduce Joe Allen, who's going to introduce our pledge.
Well, we started off our school year with our fourth grade students who will be leading us in the pledge tonight. So inviting the following students up from Mrs. Womper and Mrs. Krew's class. Tonight, we have Maddie Turner, Emerson Savon, and Jamison Furtz. The students want to come on up here and ask everybody to rise so we can send the pledge. Go ahead.
I bow to the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stevens, please go to room. Mr. Spannen.
Present.
Mr. Venters.
Present.
Mrs. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Here.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Present.
A present, sir. Uh, we'll start out with some committee reports. Student achievement first.
Well, I'd like to introduce a couple of students from the high school. They're going to tell us about Link Crew and freshman orientation. So gentlemen, if you'll come to the podium, I'd like to introduce Clayton Snyder and Evan Stonerock. You guys can stand right here and adjust. Are you guys going to be using that?
We had a presentation. Do you have to pull it up there?
No, it's the.
You gotta touch, see the P down there? Touch the P. On next to the chrome circle. Oh, that's you for later?
Yes.
Never mind.
You wanna talk about.
These boys like to explain things. You could.
Yeah, they could, definitely.
How about you guys?
So, we're here to explain to you Link Crew in the first day of the school year for the freshmen, which was freshman orientation. So myself as a Link Crew leader, we went through about three days of training during the summer, which lasted like from nine to one P M. From nine to one P M. And that was just leading up, training us how to do basic icebreakers with our groups and orientate the freshmen into the high school. Then on the first day, we started out just welcoming the freshmen to the school and gathering them in the gym. We had lines of like leaders were juniors and seniors mostly. And we would line the hallways and kind of just like welcome them warmly into the high school where we gather them in the gym. And this is Evan Stonerock. He's one of the freshmen that participated in the orientation.
Got it from here?
Yeah. So first, we started off doing some activities in the gym, which consisted of just whole class of all the freshmen together doing icebreakers and getting to know each other. And just introducing them to the teachers and leaders and giving them their name tags, which were assigned them to their groups. And second, we, each group had their two leaders, which usually consisted of a guy and a girl. And we were assigned to create themes, and the themes ranged from video game characters to firefighters to just teachers in general. One of the themes actually was they had necklaces with pictures of all the teachers on them. And they gave those to all their students. And the best team won a prize. And the leaders, after that, we'd lead our groups to the classrooms. And there, we'd kind of talk one-on-one. We had groups like ranging from ten to twelve students. We talked one-on-one about high school experiences and just giving them the general rundown of like how to make it through high school and how to study. And yeah. We kind of explained like just the majors, like always walk on the right side of the hallway and try not to go up the stairs the wrong direction. Just always go with the flow and don't be late to class, like best routes, how to take and all that. And then we also talked to them about like the best events in high school, like homecoming, football games, and how to always show their school spirit throughout the school and stress to the themes. And it's like, it's not uncommon for students to just, for students to dress as themes. And it's not like, to be, um, trying to think of the word. It's not, yeah. I think you get the gist.
We're good.
Yeah. And then as the groups headed to lunch, the leaders would sit with the freshmen and kind of just give them a little boost of courage to have an upperclassman sitting with them and not to be scared of us or anything. We're very kind people. And after lunch, the freshmen found this very beneficial to them. We did a rock down, a rundown of their schedule. So we do the normal bell schedule, but in shortened time, so they got to go to all the classrooms and kind of got to get their route going for the next day of school before they had all the sophomores, juniors, and seniors there to kind of clutter the hallways a little bit more. So we took a survey after freshman orientation. All the freshmen filled out a paper, had some questions on it. One of the questions was if they liked the first day of school and found it beneficial to their high school experience or no. And we had ninety-five percent of students say yes and found that they were very beneficial and enjoyed it and found it very welcoming and helped them like get incorporated into the high school. And five point one percent said no, but most of those answers were only because it was the first day of school. So that was their explanation. There's some strong points according to the freshmen. They liked having juniors and seniors lead them versus the teachers, because we can explain to them firsthand experience. And they didn't feel uncomfortable talking to a teacher as much as they would to a junior or senior. They thought the schedule walkthrough was one of the most important things of the day because it gave them the experience and courage to like go meet their teachers and not be, have that trouble of trying to find their way through the hallway on the first day. They also found the activities we did within the classroom, because we did icebreakers basically. And the groups of freshmen were mixed, so it wasn't as if they got to choose their friends or anything. So really molded or put the class into a melting pot, got them to get familiarized with everyone in their class versus just their friends. And then some of the weak points the freshmen thought they said is in the gym, we did icebreakers as an entire school. And some of the teachers tried to like go with the trend and do some trendy things. And they thought that was a little uncomfortable at the start or awkward. And some strong points according to the leaders, they liked being able to independently talk to their groups and just have the independence to explain and just go out and talk to them about whatever they wanted to talk about or answer any questions they had. And we also like the very open, the freshmen were very open and attentive to when we talked. They were very interested and just, they had many questions and we were able to help and answer them as much as we could. We also thought the handbook helped a lot, because the leaders were each giving a handbook during our training. And it was just like a little twenty-page thing that if we ever got stuck on a question or got stuck not knowing what to talk about, it had things for us to do and talk about with the freshmen, which we found very helpful. And the weak points according to the leaders, we would have liked to have more time to talk to them in the classrooms. Because we only had like a couple, one or two hours. And the amount of questions they had and the activities we had to do, there's a lot to get done in that short amount of time. And then, any questions from the board or any other people that you'd like us to answer?
Well, this was the first year we ever did this. I was super excited about it. I loved the idea. And so with you being a junior, do you wish you would have had this opportunity as a freshman?
Uh, yes. I found myself as a freshman kind of lost on the first day and more confused and scared of the upperclassmen. And with this, I feel as if the freshmen kind of got to know the upperclassmen and found out they weren't so scared as they make it out to be. And the school actually isn't that bad of a place.
What was your take on it, Evan?
I think it was a great idea.
Okay.
And I actually learned about two junior and senior. I learned about two of them, and now I'm actually friends with them because of my school. And at the beginning of the, when we were all in the gym, I liked the point, I liked a point that teacher made that said that the high school needs observers and doers, which I actually really liked that point. I don't know why.
Yeah, it's definitely, that's great. Yeah.
I'm just glad someone said it and not just like had to go through it.
And also, Link Crew's continuously kept up with their freshman groups throughout their year. And right before homecoming, we actually talked to them about homecoming, like etiquette and how to do things. You know, we also check in with them every once in a while, every couple of months to like just see how they're doing, if they have any questions or any problems to talk to us about and that. We also recently attended a meeting at Hobart Arena about drug use and like the effects and impacts it has and how to address it, how to treat it, just in case we had any of that troubles.
Wow. That's a lot of training.
So how did they, how did they pair you guys up as far as leaders with the freshman groups?
Um, it was randomized. The leaders kind of got to say who they got to choose as a partner, but it was mainly just boy and girl and juniors and seniors. And the freshmen were randomly assigned to us through a number system.
Yeah, I didn't know my leaders.
So you, was he your leader?
No.
No.
Well, it's good that you don't know your leader, because the whole point is to meet new people, feel more comfortable. So like that's, that looked out great.
Yeah, I met new, two new people.
Yes, and you said your president. So that, this is a perfect example of why we had this idea.
So would you recommend that it continue next year?
Uh, yes.
And would you recommend that the, besides the Link Crew juniors and seniors, that they are not present on the first day? I mean, how did you keep the sophomores engaged in their activity?
The sophomores were kind of separate. They were sent off to a gym while, or not gym, but lunchroom while we were in the classrooms. And they were in the library while we were in the gym. So it was kind of separated. And we switched in different times, so it was less chaotic and there wasn't as much chaos in the hallways.
Sounds like it was a productive day. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anything else you want to add?
Um, that's it.
I feel I just want to say thank you for the leadership. I think it's exciting to see our students serving these roles.
I like how you used objective and subjective information you shared with us. It's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'd invite you to stay for the whole movie.
Yeah, you're allowed to leave.
I have some studies.
You mentioned studying earlier. I was really happy about that.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All right, next item on the agenda is parent organizations. And I think Teresa's going to address this. Ms. Dunaway?
Yeah. I just want to thank all of the parents, grandparents, and community members who support all of our parent organizations. We are very blessed to live in a community where we all have vested interests. So I'm just going to try to keep it under five minutes, five minutes when I practice it. But it's important that, you know, because we're talking about every building, I don't want to short anybody. I'll just start with our first group, which is our Broadway Pie. And that is Nevencopic, which is our K one building, and Broadway, which is our second and third grade building. And all of these groups have a Facebook page. This one happens to be Broadway Pie. So you can go on Facebook and they do a very good job of posting the activities, how you can get involved, pictures of how their money is being spent. So that's a good way to reach out. And you can always reach out to any of these building offices to get information as well. Today, they had their completion of their one-and-done fundraiser, which is their Read-A-Thon. It's something that they started new. It was new last year, and they came up with the idea to do a Read-A-Thon, which ironically had never been really done before. It was a huge success. They made twenty thousand dollars in one week. And the kids all enjoyed reading. So it was basically a double win-win. Their goal this year was to get the participation up to fifty percent. The twenty thousand dollars was actually only with thirty-five percent participation. So in order to do that, they came up with some great ideas. And one of the ideas was to have guest surprise readers. So on their Facebook page, every night, they did a live feed where an anonymous guest reader would read to the kids. And some, I think some of the posts got up to eight hundred hits for just one post. So that was super exciting. And it was really important to this group of parents to give the money back right away, because a lot of times we hear parents say, our kids raised all that money and we didn't get to see anything, you know, that it was being used for. So they came up with an idea this year for a teacher wish list. So they went to the Nevencopic teachers and the Broadway teachers and said, you don't need to do a grant. If you want something special for your classroom, just send us an email. So they used that Read-A-Thon money, and each building received all kinds of wonderful things. You'll see pictures on Facebook. The most popular items were wiggle chairs and wiggle bands, which is a band you put around the legs of the desk. And the kids can put their feet there when they get fidgety, which keeps them engaged, not distracting the classroom. And also STEM equipment. They had a lot of requests for that. So it was a successful. Hopefully this year, they reach fifty percent participation. Of course, at the end of the year, they have their fun fair event. So that, that covers that building. LT Ball Intermediate is our fourth and fifth grade building. And their parent page is called LT Ball Parent Association. Their one-and-done fundraiser is actually coming up. It's November seventeenth. It's called the Winter Wonderland Bazaar. That's a mouthful. And if you are a vendor that sells anything such as thirty-one, Sensi, T-shirts, crafts, candles, find them on their page, reach out to LT Ball, and you can get a vendor application and get a booth on November seventeenth. The other things they do in that building would be, they do after-school bingo, which a lot of kids stay. They do popcorn. It's very popular. They do Relay for Life for a whole week. They do different events every day. The parents do Pretzel Day. They also do my favorite event, which is the Veterans Day Luncheon. And I know a lot of times they do lasagna. That seems to work out really well. And they also do the end-of-the-year fifth grade celebration. So a lot of great ways to get involved with the LT Ball Parent Association. We also have the middle school, which is our six through eight building. Last year, one of the main things their building did was the courtyard. They fixed the courtyard up. They also do the parents run the Spirit Ware event. They do book fair, Grandparents' Day. They do a Mother's Day tea, which is, that, that event has grown, much like the Donuts for Dads at Broadway. Every year, it just gets bigger and bigger, and we need more and more volunteers. And also, just ending, their main fundraiser is the magazine sales. So that's, that covers the middle school. And their Facebook page is Tippecanoe Middle School. So that is, that's how you can reach out to them. Finally, we have the high school, which the high school parent organization is called Parents Who Care. And their Facebook page is extremely active. They do an amazing job of updating that page with meetings, events, ways to get involved. Some of the main things they do are the Powderpaw Football Game, Homecoming Bonfire, the Top Scholar Banquet, Senior Community Service Breakfast. I love that event. The seniors do one day of community service, and the Parents Who Care make an amazing breakfast for them. They also do, of course, the Prom Red Carpet and After Prom. I know that this year, After Prom is also going to be at Scene seventy-five once again. In the last two years, the volunteerism from this group has grown. They've had a lot more volunteers. So they're going to, their goal is to broaden their scope this year, and they're going to include band, theater, and academic groups. So that parent group is going to do even more than they typically already have been doing. So thank you to all of our parents, grandparents, community members. Whether you volunteer a little or a lot, we appreciate it, and they're all very successful. So that's it. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Dr. Kump, what's the superintendent's assistant superintendent report?
All right, I'm going to start with the state report card and just have a couple of slides. I want to highlight the C V.
Just hit the.
The P at the bottom left.
Yeah, just hit the.
Yeah.
There you go.
All right. I just want to spend some time with the state report card that's just recently been released. It sends some things out in our Friday board updates to you, but I just wanted to take a moment to really look at those. Our overall score or grade as a district was a B. Actually, we're very proud of that. There were only two in Miami County, ourselves in Miami East, and actually across the state, very few As. So we're very happy to be a B and want to continue to improve and strive for that A as an overall score. The areas that, you know, we're quite strong in happen to be graduation rate and also closing the gap. And also a solid B there in the area of progress. I want to spend a little time this evening looking at achievement, are at risk with their K three meters, and are also prepared for success. This is a breakdown of all of our buildings and just looks at their own individual grade card. You know, it's interesting, there's different things that occur each year that kind of mixes some things up. Just kind of noting for our middle school, for their progress and their gap closing, those grades were actually transferred and the same grades, but in the different spots last year. So different groups come through, different aspects in their testing. So there's always things that we're learning about. And as far as the total outcome, we're all kind of sitting on the edge of our chairs, not exactly sure how that's going to turn out, but just strive to keep all of our kids having as much success as possible. The performance index is one of those areas that we did receive a C in, and we received an eighty-one point one percent. And there is actually a ninety-seven point three out of the possible one hundred and twenty. So I kind of wanted to highlight that just a little bit. Maybe I'm better over here than over there. As I look at this, I just kind of wanted to help you see that the area that, you know, you can see, in order to have a performance index, there's going to be, I think, several slides here that I'm going to show you. But essentially, in order to get a hundred and twenty, we would have to have a hundred percent of our students at the proficient level in order to get a hundred percent. So that, that in itself is quite a challenge. I wanted to mention that we are, as far as eighty-one percent, you really have to be at the ninety percent level to be at an A in this area. So we have a distance to go. And essentially, the percentage of students scoring in each band is weighted to determine the points earned. The next area is far as indicators meant fourteen out of twenty-four. We work with twenty-four indicators, and there's several of these. And because there's so, there's twenty-four indicators, I will go over each area so that you can kind of see where that's, that's heading. Just under the eighty percent there at our English Language Arts at third grade level. And so that was close, but didn't quite make that. We're very fortunate in both our fourth and fifth grades. Those ended up being strong progress in those areas. As we move forward, our sixth grade, we can see that there's once again close, but not quite at eighty percent. And then just some, some distances as well as we're looking at those. In eighth grade, I know I tried to make a few notations. There's, if you gone on the site, there is a lot of information regarding the state report cards. And this here, I will go back. So on this one, in the area of mathematics, I wanted to highlight that that mathematics is not a score that we particularly would like to see. We'd like for that to be much higher. But I do want to indicate that that's based largely on our pre-algebra area students, and we do want that to be stronger. Our actual students that are in algebra is over in the high school scores. So that piece is not part of the middle school, even though that they, if you're receiving the instruction at the middle school, that that particular scoring piece is inherited by the high school. And then at the high school, we look at that. So even at that, our Algebra One is just slightly under the eighty percent, but very close. And then we get into our Language Arts is once again under. And our end of the course improvement indicator is a piece that we're, that we made, but is our geometry that we're still working on. And I will note that the geometry across the state was a lower score. And all these things we're still learning about, not for sure why, happened to be a lower score across the state, but that is a phenomenon that we're seeing.
So Dr. Kump, on the, on the math situation, I mean, we've got some, some students that, in eighth grade that are taking the high school math.
That's right.
Right?
Yes.
Seventh, seventh and eighth grade.
Seventh and eighth grade.
And, and those students are not in these scores.
Not in the middle school, school scores.
And is there a way that we can change the way we put the grade form together so we get their grades included in the appropriate grade that they're in? Or is, are we just stuck with the fact that they are at the high school level?
Well, it's a question that we've kind of asked ourselves, but ultimately, once they are taking and all these, it would be some accelerated work, that they are ready for that, and ultimately, we fully support that. They're ready for that next step, that then they move into. So the algebra actually is a piece that is included in the high school curriculum and actually is part of the area for those required courses for graduation. And so all of that then is moved to the high school grade card, that portion of, for that building. And it does move out of the middle school. So I, I think probably the big thing for us to take away from it, that we do have our strongest, our stronger math students that are aspiring to take the more advanced or accelerated math courses. But the other piece of that is our pre-algebra students that are not quite where we would like to see them, that even though math may not be their forte, it's something that we want to bring them as far along as we can. And so we have some work to do there.
Dr. Kump, just to clarify, if they take a high school course, they must take the end-of-course exam, which is the high school exam. The dilemma is the middle school does not get credit for them because they're not taking the seventh or eighth grade test. The high school does not get credit for them either because they are not in that building. So we don't get credit for them either way. It's one of those things I said to you earlier, Sam, we do what's best for kids, not necessarily what's going to get reported on a report card, because we take a double whammy. We don't, we, our best kids are not taking the seventh and eighth grade test, but nor is the high school getting credit for them at the high school either. So that's why our high school math scores are a little lower as well. So if you go to the high school, the score is.
There is also a little.
Yeah, that we don't get credit for those that pass it there either. So, I mean, we could, that's just the way the state, that's the way the state decides to calculate it, and that's the way it is.
But if our seventh and eighth grade was at the high school, then we could count it, because they're in the same physical building.
Then they're in the building. Well, yeah.
I mean, just asking, maybe that.
No, I don't, I don't think that we could.
If it's, if they're in the same physical building, right?
Actually, I don't know, I don't know about that. That's probably a good question.
They wouldn't be in the right graduation.
Correct. Would be in the right graduation section. That's correct.
So, I mean, I have to go back to is if we adjusted the curriculum and offered algebra in seventh, third, eighth grade as, as a course at, at the high school, or I mean, at the, at the middle school, which I guess we're doing, right?
Yeah, we do that. Correct. There are C graders.
Where the problem lies is when you award high school credit for that course. As soon as you start to attach credit to those courses, now they have to take the end-of-course exam. And when they take the end-of-course exam, that then ends up in that no man's land that, that Galen was referring to, that they don't really count with the middle school and they don't count with the high school report card. They count to the overall district report card, but they don't count to one building or another.
Last year, we had.
So is there a way for them to take both these things? Do they take the seventh and eighth?
Well, I mean, that, that's a possibility, but we test kids way too much as it is. So, I mean, in my opinion, I would say that's not in our best interest.
Let's just jump through.
So, a lot of layers to all of this. And that brings us up to another layer, which is always a little confusing. Actually, literacy is a very strong area for our district. And so it, it's difficult when we receive a C in this area, especially when you see the mismatch of one hun, what, what is our whole goal with literacy? Of course, we want our students to be able to read and enjoy that, read for information and read for enjoyment. But we also want to make sure that our third graders are meeting that third grade guarantee and that we do not have any students that need to be retained. And that is a goal that we are meeting at a hundred percent. So to me, that, that's worth an A in itself. But when we look at all these things, there is a piece, and we refer to it as a RIMP, as Reading Improvement and Monitoring Plan. And so we provide one of those for all of our students that are needing to be monitored and be low-grade level in the area of reading. And those are all individually tested and assessed on that and determined that that's a need that exists. And so then we have what's called this, this RIMP. And so we had forty-nine students that moved to, they were off-track and they moved to on-track. And then a hundred and fifteen students started off-track. So we received a forty-two percent. What it says is zero reductions of RIMPs. What we do is we try, we leave that support system in place so that we can continue to monitor them for a period of time. Because when you're receiving a lot of support, you may be holding your own and showing improvement. But when that's pulled back and you're being supported in the classroom, but not as much one-on-one, we want to make sure that's sustained. So we do see that, that is something that regarding the percentage, when we look at the number of students that have been placed on RIMP and those that are being reduced or taken off, that that's a piece that probably is impacting our grade card. Once again, we feel like we're doing the right thing. Once again, we feel like we're doing the right thing for students. Mrs. Smith, anything you want to add on that?
Not really, I mean, that just basically that proficient thing is based on that, the test. We have a lot of students that end up being on a RIMP that we feel are aren't necessarily needing a RIMP, but the test tells us they have to have a RIMP. So they're they're very good readers, but maybe don't necessarily test the best. So then they have to be put on a RIMP, but yeah.
What determines on or off track for a RIMP?
They have to score a seven hundred, they have to be proficient, they have to be proficient on that test that they take. So they take it in the fall, it's coming up.
So if they don't score seven hundred in the fall.
Then they automatically have to be put on a RIMP, correct.
And then if, because I guess I'm a little bit confused, if a hundred percent met the third grade reading guarantee.
It's two different things. So you can be, you can meet the guarantee by passing, there's a score that's passing. And there's a reading sub-score, then there's a whole scale score that they do both from. So they have to meet that, so they have to pass, get that passing score, which is lower than the proficient score. So so for example, last year, six seventy-two was the passing score for the reading guarantee. But I'm sorry, for the promotion, proficient was seven hundred.
Passing score and the promotion score are different.
Uh huh, correct.
So that's why you see.
So you can, you can meet the reading guarantee by passing with a six seventy-two, but you may not be quite there proficient. Yes, were you going to add something to that?
Well, it's not just third grade students either, we're only talking about third grade students. This is students that are that are that are assessed with a development or DRA is also part of it. So it's fall for kindergarten to first grade, it's fall to fall whether they moved on track, first, second, then when they get to third grade, it's fall to spring whether they've made it on track. Zero RIMP reductions, I noticed, I did some investigation, some of the schools who got As in this had like six or seven or eleven RIMP reductions, it meant they didn't put as many kids on RIMPs. It's kind of a numbers game that you play, but they had reductions because that meant they didn't have them on a RIMP, but they didn't pass the third grade reading test. So we're doing a good job making sure our kids are getting, are on the reading improvement plans that need to be.
And we feel like a hundred percent is a really good, I mean, we feel like those students that don't meet that in the fall, we do a lot of interventions and things to help support them and then obviously are able to get to that piece that needs to meet promotion.
Prepared for Success, that's our next piece that I wanted to look at. This is based on the ACT SAT. We have a Q that's taking ACT that they elected in this particular group. But predominantly, ACT is what's used in our district. This last spring, all of our juniors took the ACT. So we're going to see how that comes through. This particular, because this is based on the graduating class. And so this graduating class, not all of them took the ACT at that time. So this will be an interesting piece for us to watch. Our AP courses as well, those that end up having a three or greater on their AP exam, and that's in this mix as well, and those are weighted. And this is just a little bit of a breakdown of that information, and you can see.
And these are spring juniors, is that the information that we're looking at?
This is actually, for the most part, this is our graduating class for seniors this year.
It would, it would be any student who took the ACT last year and whether or not they earned remediation free score. So that means a twenty-two or above, any student.
Okay.
And that includes the junior class. So for the past two years, the junior class has taken the ACT, the state mandated ACT. The AP scores, that that, there's a bit of a numbers game you can play there, too. There are some districts that require students to take the AP exam if you take the AP course and the district pays for it. We are not a district that pays for the AP exam and students have the option to take the AP exam. That's ninety-four dollars a test. So in a sense, you have some districts who are buying their way into some Prepare for Success points there because you get a a point three added to each student who has the remediation free ACT score. So you get one point for that and then a point three bonus is added for students who have a three or above on an AP exam, have taken a college credit plus course and earned three credit hours, or have scored a four on the International Bible Glory exam, which is not something that we offer.
Do we pay for ACTs?
We do not, the state pays for the ACTs.
The state, yeah, state allows us to do it one time, those that take additional, yeah, one time.
Right.
Yeah.
So back up one slide.
Yes.
So we had a hundred and fifty-two students that that helped us get bonus points, right? That's what this this chart shows.
And this showed the value of point three.
And I would say that probably a good number of those points came from the AP exam. Because we added the AP courses, we had a number of of students who took AP exams, we had over eighty freshmen that took AP exams and scored quite well with human geography. So adding those additional courses helped us in this Prepared for Success.
The graduation cohort, what does that number represent? Any student that took an ACT?
Okay, so this graduation cohort, that's actually graduating class from both two thousand six, graduate class two thousand seventeen and graduating class two thousand eighteen. And so and it also has what we would refer to as a super senior individual that may take five years for graduation. All right, so the one thing I do want to close with is the aspect that I'm very excited to say that our buildings are really spending some time looking at data. And I've been able to actually do some observations and sit in really to watch teams involved with their administrators doing this at the high school as well as the middle school. We've been, and you mentioned the thing about notice, between the notice and wonder session with data, and that's based off of Daniel Vinnable's, Vinnable's work. But anyway, it it really is getting them into looking at the data that's in front of them. What are they noticing about it? And then the aspect, what do they wonder about those patterns, those things that are emerging? And then that will be built off of, and they'll begin thinking about how does that look and what might that, how, what we wonder and what we're noticing impact the classroom and instruction that we're doing? Yeah, some really good things with that. Anything that you all would like to add? This is just kind of the tip of the iceberg, but I do think it's important to take time to really look at our state report card.
I have a question, I'm trying to remember if, I'm pretty sure, is this the first year we've started that additional math class at the high school? Because we were talking about the math score? Okay, so it'll be interesting to see.
Yes, oh yes, exam, good, that is integrated.
That's the wonder part, Teresa.
I'm sorry.
That's the one, that's the wonder.
Right, right.
I noticed that you started a new math class, I wonder.
How that will impact.
This is our first year, so I'm interested to see how that works.
Going to.
Oh, I don't know it though.
Double click up there, up top, there you go.
All right, let me just, yeah, there it goes.
Okay, got it.
All right. Let's see, next item, just want to touch a little bit about facilities. So with facilities, we have been continuing to work with the OFCC and the, we are working on the ALP and that stands for the Expediate Local Partnership Program, and we're working on that application. There's a piece that's called the reprogramming, and that is particularly for LT Ball. And it is not a small piece, there is a lot of work that goes into this next stage, a lot of projected numbers and then cross-checking to make sure that those are as accurate as possible, continuing to work with the state. And I know that Mike Richly, Mr. Fister, Barry Fister, and the team from OFCC have been working together, I was able to sit in for a portion of that, but there's some massive documents that's being created for that. Mr. Fister, anything that you would want to add on that?
No, I think you covered it, it's a lot of work trying to get it all in place and submit it to the state by next week, our goals.
So appreciate all that time and just everybody working together as a team to get it done. And just slow, tedious, but chipping away at it, so.
So what to expect after that?
Once the OFCC gets it, they take it in front of their commission, they meet twice a month, and then they will look at our reprogram and they'll look at our assessment challenge and our application for the waiver, and hopefully we have a decision by the end of October.
Okay, next item is the PI renewal, Miss Levy, and just a reminder, that is on the ballot for November the sixth. Wanted to just bring our board members' attention to a handout that was provided as the information only. So as community members are, you know, asking for any information aspect, hopefully that will guide you. This is an information piece, once again, that it's, you know, it's a renewal and that we really have had it within the district since nineteen sixty-eight. So it's longstanding and it's two mils and it's zero taxes. But there's additional information for any community member that would like to have that. If there's questions that you have on this upcoming renewal, please contact the building principals if you happen to have a student at that building, and they'll reach out to us here at the board office. Or if you're a community member and you not have a student in the schools right now, please reach out to our board office and we'll try to answer your questions. Anything else the board would like to add?
Will there be signs?
Definitely, we will have signs out in the yard so our community is aware that this is going to be on the ballot. So just making sure everybody is aware of it. Hopefully through the news, the media, and our quick news has, I think, actually put this information sheet out, I think, actually last week, and I think it may be once again this week, but just keeping our community informed. But yes, the signs will be there, and if you have questions, let us know. And then I just wanted to mention about school and community events. We had a wonderful, and the weather did cooperate enough for us, homecoming this last weekend, a big wind over Devens, but had a wonderful court and crowding of the King and Queen for our homecoming and just was very excited about that. The weather was very iffy and the forecast was not very kind, right about two thirty and three o'clock when we had to make a decision about the homecoming parade, so we did cancel that. But it did hold off and we were able to have all the recognition and the traditional ceremonies as we began for our pre-game events. And then I was able to play the game in its entirety. We had a homecoming dance, the theme was Wizard of Oz on Saturday evening there that was held at the high school. The students looked lovely and they seemed to have a great time. And there was just under seven hundred students that participated in that, a tremendous turnout. And I thank Mr. Verhoff, office staff, and all the advisors that were very involved with that. And I appreciate the students and families for their good behavior and and just enjoying the evening out.
I think we had a class reunion happening also, the class of sixty-eight.
Uh huh, yes, I I saw that with that too, so thank you for mentioning that. Anything else that you can think of that's upcoming that we want to?
I'll just mention tomorrow night is the Pink Ribbon Game, one of the junior high volleyball teams, which last year they raised over twenty-five hundred dollars, I think it was.
With their baskets, you have to wrap the baskets.
With just the baskets and all the games that were played, it's a big event, it's not, last year it was Troy, and Troy really jumped in and it was a blast because the game was really fun, too. But tomorrow night is is the Pink Ribbon Game, so lots of kids will be dressed in pink and junior high kids, I think if they buy a pink T-shirt, they get in free, I think that's what it is.
And Chick-fil-A, they have Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A and games to play, if between games, you try and serve and hit the pizza box and you win a pizza. So that's tomorrow night.
Who doesn't want to do that, that's fun, yeah, that's a good time.
All right, and we're up to you, Mr. G, Title One.
Well, Title One update, first of all, Title One is a federally funded program that we have two full-time teachers and then we have three that start actually tomorrow. And the assessments have been done, that's where we get our students that are are below reading level and we work to really boost their reading. And we have wonderful Title One teachers. And we lost one of our people that they do a hundred and ten days, three people just do a hundred and ten days, and we lost one to a full-time job, but we were fortunate enough to find Mrs. Turner and kids. I probably owe you guys an ice cream cone. I didn't have to be here for it, you guys have been awesome.
Absolutely.
I will tell you.
It's a long time to say.
Kayden, you learned well at Broadway when you were there. I can't take credit for the other two, but.
Well, their soccer was canceled, so they.
Okay, so they got to come along. Well, you guys are awesome and, yeah, I need to give you a gift card to be DQ for sitting here for so long and sitting so well. But I'd like to introduce our third Title One teacher, that hundred and ten day person who's going to be at Broadway. She actually has been at Broadway almost the whole year leading up to this because she was filling in for one of our teachers that was out for surgery. And so she just kind of got like a week off, I think, she's going to be back in it. So Linda, would you introduce yourself?
Sure, that makes me laugh, that's great. My name is Linda Turner and I actually grew up in Tip City, so I am a nineteen ninety-four Tippecanoe graduate. I went to Bowling Green State University, got my bachelor's in elementary education. After that, I went to, I taught at Trotwood for two years. And then my husband and I moved to Arlington, Virginia. And when we went there, I I got my master's degree at George Mason University. And then I taught there for eight years, and it was in a Title One. I taught reading recovery and reading resource for eight years. And then I end up staying home with my kids. We came back to Tip about ten years ago, and I've been substitute teaching for the past two years in the Tip schools. So I'm really excited to start tomorrow and excited to, just for a new endeavor. And so this is my whole family, this is my husband Troy.
I probably owe you a DQ. I'll take theirs.
And this is my son Kayden, he's at Tip Middle School, seventh grade. And my son Colin, he is at LT Ball, and he likes the wiggle chair. And that's my daughter Ally, she's at Broadway in second grade.
So you're going to be at Broadway or Nevekopik or both?
Broadway, yes, yes.
Great.
Broadway.
You're welcome.
Thank you, very much, thank you.
So you know what a RIMP is?
Yes.
That's what a RIMP is now, a garage.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
You're welcome.
You may go.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good job sitting there.
Thank you.
And curriculum update, just a couple of things. We have all our math curriculum, they're up and going. We had, we had some PD before the school year started, and then we will have some more on November nineteenth. Actually, I was going to mention our intensified algebra class, I popped in there a couple of times, they're they're doing well. They have something called Alex, which assesses them on a regular basis and and really keeps us honed in on where they are. And we're getting trained on that on the twenty-fifth, that's tomorrow. They'll get some extra training on that for our two teachers who are working in that that unit. So excited about that, you know, kind of see where they are, the pace has slowed down. They get a lot of hands-on time, a lot of intensified, you know, time one-on-one with a teacher when they don't understand something. So I'm curious to see whether we can get a few more over that, in the hope of of passing the end of course exam. So excited about that. And then working on science, the teachers are working on gap analysis right now, just looking where our gaps are, our scores. I've got Mr. Hoffman here, who just touched base with me before we came in. He's really focused in on our biology scores and things we're doing there, so he's on our, working on that. So we're excited about working on science and moving ahead with that.
I'm trying to remember, that that new math class is Mr. Tuie, and then wasn't there one other staff?
Mr. Kedaki.
Okay, gosh, oh yeah, that's right, thank you.
Can I talk to you, want to take a minute to talk about the quality profile that our folks should be watching in their mailbox for here pretty shortly?
I would love to. So quality profile, last year was our inaugural publication, and that went out to all of our households in the community. Mrs. Robbins, our communication coordinator, is going to be diligently on this once again, gathering things from all of our buildings and across the district, all of our programs, and trying to highlight those, as well as, we have a couple of new highlights. One area is the area of transportation, and the other is services, so that would be connected to food services and and some of our other maintenance services in the buildings. It will focus on some of our progress, such as. It will focus on some of our progress such as our Phase One completion of the stadium. And so we are excited to really once again have information that's beyond the state report card, which we were sharing with you this evening. The quality profile provides us an opportunity to look at the other aspects of our district to give a full review of what's going on in our schools and the progress and opportunities that our students have. And that should be coming out to you by the end of October, you should have that in your mailbox. So that will be our second edition and we're excited about it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments and I have Amy Hakenberger. That would like to address the board about some parking concerns.
Good evening, my name is Amy Hakenberger and I live directly across the street from the city park here in town. And it's no secret that I've always had some concerns about the impact that the renovations of the stadium and then its use may have on that surrounding area where I live. But the concern that brings me here this evening really wasn't one that I thought was ever going to be a concern when this whole process started. And that is the following, the city park has become a parking lot during some of the events that are occurring at the stadium. I've lived in my home for more than nineteen years and event nights were never a significant problem. Prior to about two years ago, the school was always diligent in placing signs up to direct people where to park. And they put even that simple little sawhorse out that kind of blocked that area to keep people from kind of, you know, looking for the shortcut and the shortest distance to walk. Attendees were very courteous about parking in those lots or in the, in the street areas that were available to them. But in the last two years, people have created their own parking in that park proper area, south of the tennis courts, between the courts and the main street. And that grassy area has apparently become fair game in spite of no parking signs that the city put up prior to the school year. And this happens even though there's parking available in the lower lot and even though you have entrances down by that lower lot. The weekend of September fifteenth saw that park proper area packed with cars, both Saturday for the band show and Sunday for a Pee-wee football event that was occurring there. And although Mr. Faust stated that those in the park for Sunday's issue were not there for the football game, but rather for an event at the Roundhouse. And I don't doubt that some of those cars were indeed there at the Roundhouse. And I already addressed city council at their meeting on Monday about that. By three-thirty, the Roundhouse was locked up, the park was still full and people were still coming in for those later games at the stadium. This continual parking eventually is going to damage the park itself and there's also a safety concern, when especially you have little kids, you know, running to their cars across those streets. And at night it's dark, that's not a super well-lit area, so I have concerns about, you know, possible safety issues there as well. Last year I had reached out to both the city manager and to Dr. Kumpf when this started to become an issue. And I will say that both Dr. Kumpf and Mr. Faust responded immediately and they did go back to putting up that sawhorse and that seemed to mitigate the problem somewhat. But it's the new year and we have the same problem. And so I dare say that if your high school students decided they were going to park in your athletic fields instead of your parking lot that you have set out for them, that would be a concern and it would be addressed. You are invested in teaching your students the three pillars associated with your PBIS initiative, be respectful, be responsible, have integrity. And so I am asking you to apply those pillars outside of the classroom in this situation. Please respect the property outside of the stadium as well as inside of the stadium. I realize that you cannot control the behaviors of others. However, as PBS has taught all of us, you can only expect people to follow or meet your expectations if you make them clear. By simply putting up the event parking sign or the barricades while reminding people from the public address system if those instructions are ignored, you clearly state your expectation that people find legal, designated, appropriate parking. If your facilities manager for your events is unable or unwilling to place the signs or the barricades as was standard procedure in the past, and maybe there is something in the contract where it's a change of working condition. If that's the issue, I ask that you please consider sending me a copy of your event schedules. Placing the barricades kind of behind those walls, I will put the gates up if that's what needs to occur. Not everyone is going to earn the right to play on your field, but everybody has the right to play in the park. And it is our responsibility to protect it and be respectful of it, and I think we need to have the integrity to do both. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. President's comments, I will defer comments at this meeting and move on. So the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, prior meeting minutes.
All right.
So there was minutes attached to our agenda.
Under content, did you give?
Really? So we need a motion to approve.
All motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second from Corinne and Joe Owen, any corrections? There are none, please call roll.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Or they just weren't looking hard enough. Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venter.
Yes.
Minutes are approved. You're back on the hot seat here, Mr. Stevens with the treasurer's report, starting with the monthly financial report. So if I get a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second from Mrs. Heatherly and Mrs. Dahl. Do you want to have any discussion here?
I honestly don't have any real issues, just we are doing well. I'm very happy to say we're still on budget on everything, you will see, I'll save that for appropriations. But unless you have anything, any specific questions for me, I'm just going to leave it at that. It's a good monthly report, I did clean up the devil on the front cover, he's nice and solid red now. It's just nice to play around with that sometimes. Do I have any particular questions from board members at this time?
The only thing I didn't understand was on the, on the investment income report, the Sally Mae, it says new issue, what does that mean?
We had, one of our investments at Fifth Third Bank had matured. And so we took the money that matured and the interest that we'd received on that and rolled it into a new Sally Mae investment. And that is a four-year investment that's currently at three point one five percent.
So it's not an issue and it's an issuance?
It's an issuance, yes. And you can see, if you go back up to the first CD at Fifth Third, it's the Ally Bank, you can see that that matured on August second. Working with the investment advisor at Fifth Third, J.D. Ward, I've been working with J.D. for many years even before I was here at Tip. And so he helped us find something that would work well for us. And as you can see, the interest rate on that is much higher than any of the other issues we have right now. We have a laddered portfolio for that, if you look at those, you'll see we have one that expires in one year, two years, three years, and four years.
All right, I'm going to again bring the note, I've done this a couple of times, the bank balance and the fact that we've got outstanding checks that exceed our bank balance. I know it's a timing issue and it's just the accountant in me, it bugs me to see that we have a negative balance in the account. And you show the outstanding checks, I know it's, we haven't bounced a check, our accounts were set up so we can't bounce a check.
No, that's because we have the Unity Bank money down in the investments as part of that.
Right, so, I don't know that there's a change, it just bothers me that it looks like we're.
Well, I'd rather have the money down in the investment side because that's where we get interest and if it's sitting up in the checking account, there's nothing. I'm honored to those accounts and move money as needed.
All right, any other questions or comments? Call roll, please.
That page, Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venter.
Yes.
Treasurer's report is approved. All right, so the next one is the appropriations amendments, motion, someone?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Venter and a second from Mrs. Dunaway. Mr. Stevens, what would you like to talk about on the amendments?
Just an information purposes only, down there at the bottom, you'll see all the funds that we have done some changes to for appropriations. And one of the things that I'm starting to add in there now is why we're doing increases. One of the things you'll notice is that we have additional textbook purchases. We've had more children enroll at the high schools, so we're short some math textbooks, we're short some foreign language textbooks. So I did, I think, and we also had more students in classes, so we had to increase our class fee expense. But we're also increasing the revenues that we're receiving from the kids that are attending those classes as well. We did add the wellness budget for the year that had not been submitted to me by the wellness coordinators, but earlier this year, but we've added that. So you see an increase in the eighteen fund for the wellness budget. And then we also included some swim team, the swim team budget has been turned into us as well. So you'll see all of those located down in that, down in the informational section. Any other questions or concerns?
Call roll, please.
Mr. Venter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes, appropriation amendments are approved.
Then and now fund, need a motion.
I'll make one.
Second.
A motion and a second from Mr. Venter and Mrs. Dunaway.
We had one item and it was a phone bill item, I don't, it's a utility, I don't really consider this as an and now, but I'm not going to take the chance with an auditor that's going to tell me, oh, it's over three grand, so better safe than sorry.
Okay. Safe and sorry, all right, call, any questions? Call roll, please.
Mr. Venter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes, that motion is approved.
All right, last thing on our treasurer's report is some fund transfers. So we need a motion for these.
I'll make the motion.
A motion.
I'll second.
You have a second, Teresa and Joe Owen.
Just the one things that I have on these, you'll notice that these are to our sports activity accounts. This is continuing the movement of money that we started last year to help fund our, we're using some pay-to-play money to help fund our sporting accounts and our choir and band accounts. So that we can reduce the amount of door-to-door fundraisers that we have our students doing. J.D. and I have discussed this together, we feel that it's done a good job of helping to provide funding for those groups. We're going to continue to work together to determine if and when we, if we need to do this next year as well and just determine what we're going to do. The other item in the transfer that you'll see at the bottom is for our wellness incentive fund. We did receive, I want to say it was either sixty-five or seventy-five thousand dollar rebate from the Bureau of Workers' Comp from our 2016 rebate year. And one of the things that they suggested you do with those funds is to help your wellness fund. And we did the same thing last year and so we're putting that again in this year. And I know that Mrs. Proll and Mrs., I'm pretty sure it's Becky Jones, yeah, Mrs. Jones, they've got a program they're really excited for this year for the wellness program. This funding really helps them to fund that budget. Any other questions on the transfers?
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venter?
Yes.
All right, next item is old business, this is old business, strategic plan update.
It's only been a year and a half. We never have one before, so good for us, right?
All right, well, I can start off with it if you'd like.
Please.
We continue to work on this and we are making progress. I want to thank Joelle and Heatherly and Katie Barker for continuing the editing process for us to try to make a cohesive document. And also to keep boiling it down so that it is very succinct. So we are getting closer and closer, we did have a joint conference, this conference call, but it was a lengthy one at that, but a lot was accomplished with Jane Dockery, who's our consultant with this. And so we did some additional wordsmithing and really kind of queuing up for our next steps. There was a, so I know that that was sent out by Mrs. Barker, maybe Wednesday or Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday of this week. And so any feedback you have on that, if you would get that back to Joelle and Katie, probably Mrs. Proll, Carrie Proll and myself, that would be helpful and we will continue for the next. And you could also see CJ Dockery. And then there was an additional attachment that was an implementation, greater plan. And so we need to now begin filling that out as well. So if you have questions on that or need support, and Joelle, anything you want to highlight on that?
We welcome your feedback and we, we need the grammatical and content feedback on the draft. Right before I walked in, Mrs. Barker just sent me the finalized one that has the intro and the conclusion in it. And then looking at the document listing the priorities, we need your endorsement of the priorities that are listed for the first year of implementation. As well as any recommendations to either move them into another year for implementation or to strike them from the, from the strategic plan. So we welcome your feedback, assuming we get that, the sooner we can apply it and then move forward with the implementation plan.
And I underscored the aspect of the timeline for year one, that is a very critical piece to make sure we have that spot on about what we want to try to work toward and accomplish during the first year. Or at least as a minimum, gather data on that for the first year.
Hey, John, what do you want that by, because her email just didn't give, you know what I mean, by Monday, by Wednesday?
It's ten o'clock tonight?
I mean, no, seriously, because if you don't give people a deadline.
Tomorrow. I, well, let's say by midweek?
Yeah, let's just give a deadline right now, so that we, we don't want you to think we didn't, for instance, I normally respond right away, but I read the entire document twice, which takes some time. And so.
And you thought it was perfect and spot on.
Well, I didn't want to just, you know, I mean, but, so Wednesday, can we just set a time, a deadline right now?
Yes, yeah, Wednesday.
Wednesday at five?
Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
We don't want you to think that we're ignoring you or not reading it, we're just, it's a lot to digest, is all. It's chromatic, you know, it's a lot of.
Well, yeah, so we want, you know, is the content on track to what we're looking to prioritize and then are the priorities in the correct order that we want to achieve next? I'll tell you what I can do, why don't I ask Mrs. Barker to send out the, this most current one?
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, that'd be great, and then Wednesday at five, we'll get it done.
Or sooner, that's fine. Thank you for doing that, John.
All right, any else on the strategic plan?
I would just add that our goal would be to have it on the board agenda for October.
Wow, I think that's doable.
What, we'll keep working on it and we'll be going back and forth between then, but that would be our goal to have it on the board agenda for October.
Perfect.
Yeah. That would be a celebration, wouldn't it? That would be a celebration. Okay, are we ready for new business?
All right, so any other old business? New business?
New business, item A, approval of the revised athletic director's salary schedule for the 2018-19 school year.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second from Joe Owen and Teresa, discussion?
Just note that there is an attachment there.
Right. There are none, please call roll.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venter?
Yes.
That motion is approved. This, I mean, I guess, that basically took the contract and increased the number of days. We had Mr., we had our athletic directing, director contract to two hundred and twenty-six days.
days, we just extended it to two hundred and fifty days. It's a considerable amount of work being done at that, and it's not being done in two hundred and twenty-six days, it's taking more time, so.
And our camps that really are growing and developing, our students that are young athletes and their interests, those are very active over the summer months. And even though we have those that lead the camps, there's still a lot of responsibility and coordination behind the scenes.
So that leads us into the next motion.
Okay. Item B, recommended approval of a revision in base salary for Mr. JD Faust, athletic director for the 2018-19 school year, retroactive to August first, 2018.
I'll move, second.
A motion and a second. Corinne and Teresa, any discussion here?
Once again, there is an attachment of the revised...
Basically taking the new salary schedule and implementing it with Mr. Faust beginning this, this, this year.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And thank you, Mr. Faust, for all that you do for athletic planning. Very strong. Item C, approval of the following educational upgrades, retroactive back to the beginning of 2018-19 contract start.
Need a motion?
I'll move, second.
A motion and a second from Teresa. Any discussion?
This is our staff members increase their professional development through graduate work, coursework, we recognize that as a district, and there's a timeline for that.
All right, call roll, please.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item D, recommend approval of the 2017-18 tuition reimbursement request based on transcripts and proof of payment received.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
You got a motion and a second? Joelleen and Teresa? Discussion?
Once again, we encourage our staff to continue to get professional, to, you know, seek professional development opportunities, and although it's not payment in full, it is a way to recognize those efforts and that time and their own personal payment for that.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item E, recommend approval of the following Title I teacher for the 2018-19 school year, pending proper certification and paperwork, that's Linda Turner, Broadway, Title I reading.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
You got a second, motion by Andy and second by Teresa. Any discussion?
Very excited to have Mrs. Turner on board, her reading recovery background and just experiences in reading are a real plus, and they are highly committed to our district with their children attending, and she's been active in our substitute role, so very pleased to have her in this role.
Yeah, what a lot, she has a lot of experience, I was...
Call roll, please.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes, motion is approved.
Item F, recommend approval of the following supplemental winter coaching positions and miscellaneous building supplemental positions for the 2018-19 school year, pending verification and proper certification and paperwork.
I'll make a motion.
Second, motion and a second. Joelleen, myself. Any discussion?
Well, I had a, did you get my email today, Dave? My question is, isn't this handled in the contract, the TCEA contract, right? So we approve them, but isn't it already approved in there, I was confused.
The dollar amounts are in the contract, and the people that are in those positions are not.
Gotcha, because I'm always, why, my brain goes, why are we doing this, because it's already been handled in the contract?
The contract just lists the positions...
So basically, we're just filling in the names?
That is correct. And we do this on a yearly basis.
I meant to ask you that on the phone, this might have gone, so. Well, yeah, I know we do it, but I always want to say, why do we do it if it's already, okay, sorry. I'm good now.
All right, any other questions? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item G, approval to change Amy Noel's High School Infernal Club supplemental contract from a point-five contract to a one-point-old stipend contract. Approval to change Alexis Gentry's High School Art Club supplemental contract from a point-five contract to a one-point-old stipend contract.
Motion.
Second.
You got a motion and a second, Joelleen and Teresa? Any discussion?
Did these used to be split with somebody else, or?
Yes.
Is that another person that doesn't want to do it, so they're going to take over the whole role?
Gotcha.
All right. Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little...
Substitute positions.
Thank you. Item H, recommend approval to employ the following substitute positions for the 2018-19 school year, pending proper certification and paperwork.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, Teresa and Corinne. Any questions or discussion?
Just recently, we had an orientation for our substitutes, and it's good to bring more on board. Substitutes are important, are keeping our district running smoothly during times when teachers have to be away from the classroom.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item I, approval to employ the following for athletic services for the 2018-19 school year, as per the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, Teresa and Corinne. Any comments or questions? Just keep adding to the list.
That is correct. But it's a lot easier to find that list now with Word docs.
All right, call roll, please.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item J, recommend approval of payment for the July 23rd through the 26th, 2018 boys soccer camp instructors paid out of the boys soccer team account, payment totals twenty-five hundred dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Second. A motion and a second, Teresa and myself. Any comments or discussion?
Is there any reason why this is like so late? Have they been paid yet?
They have not been paid yet, I'm holding payment until we approve it. Another item to note is that the soccer club, we do charge a fee to attend.
Okay, so does this come...
This is coming, this is... It is also a fundraiser.
Any other questions?
Do we routinely do that with all the camps?
Uh, I don't even know.
Some of the camps, the, previous years, coaches paid students, and we stopped doing that, so, but yeah, majority of the time, most of the camps here, most of the time, the coach uses it as a fundraiser, it doesn't have a fundraiser account. But the boys soccer camp, for years, have been doing that, because he brings kids back that were former players that are playing in college now are coaching elsewhere, so, and like you said, this is all the money from the fees for the camp that pays the instructors, so there's no money coming out of the school account or their original fundraiser, team fundraiser account.
Any other questions? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item K, recommend approval to continue to work with Jane Dockery, Associate Director of Applied Policy Research Institute at Wright State University, to assist with the strategic planning process for an additional cost of one thousand nine hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, Joelleen and Corinne. Any questions or discussion?
Well, I have a question, our original contract, I'm trying to think, was either through Jul-, I don't know, June, June or July, and so now this is our second one. And earlier, we discussed a lengthy phone conversation, so what, I just want to figure out what exactly we're getting with this, what deliverables, how many more meetings, right?
I think it's in the attachment, isn't it? I think I read that.
I don't have an attachment.
Scroll down, the bottom of the document, it outlines what we're, attachment A, scope of work.
Thank you for that, sometimes things disappear on this, it's weird. Okay, thank you, Joelleen, you're welcome.
So, this should finish this aspect, of course, at this time, and she did have some hours that she was able to carry over, and also, she was willing to keep the dialogue going, so that we didn't have a gap.
So weird that it attached.
I assume she's been a good investment in helping move us along, we're really stagnated there for a long time.
I agree with that totally, just my personal opinion during the work session, I just would have liked a little bit more direction slash leadership, I felt like the lion's share of the work at that point of the project laid with you and Mrs. Barker, and I didn't anticipate that it was going to go that way, so I just wanted to trust...
Make sure we're not here until 10:00 PM every time she comes?
Well, you know, I mean, I just expected, that document was very rough when we got it for the work session, and I just thought it would have been a little bit more cleaned up at that point, and that was a lot.
It was a lot, it was a long night, absolutely.
I was just, I was slightly disappointed, I'll just say that, I'm just being honest.
I acknowledge what you're saying, and I can, I guess the outcome of what you're seeing, this draft that you received last week from Mrs. Barker, hopefully synthesized a lot of that information.
But that was all you and Mrs. Barker?
Well, there was a lot of guidance from Jane.
Okay, and I'm not part of those conversations, so that's just what I remember now, okay.
She's been great about helping us, reminding, yeah, I feel like we are, okay, she's helped us move this along. But I will say, a lot of credit goes to Mrs. Barker for synthesizing that information, she's been, and though she's not here, I want to make sure that she gets the credit due to her.
And as we recall, we were in a unique situation, that we had started something with OSBA, and we are fortunate that with her background, that she would pick us up and do this good process, but I appreciate your questions.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're, we need direction and leadership, that was the whole point of this, so, that's all.
Any other comments? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item L, approval to abandon the idea of a PK three building at Broadway site, and move forward to putting a pre-K five building addition at the LT Ball site, and participating in the L program through OFCC.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, Teresa and Corinne. Any discussion?
Can we just kind of define what, I mean, just to kind of sort of...
All right, so, I mean, there has been a lot of thought, a lot of years that go into this particular motion, so we did try, and we worked very hard on the aspect of having a building at the Broadway side, and that was proposed, and we actually had a bond issue, and that went down very strongly for our community, and there, I'm sure, were a number of factors, but we really have worked very hard to listen to what the board was telling us about that particular configuration and or just parts with that, including our other buildings, about the importance of preserving what we could preserve, and I think we made some strong efforts, particularly this summer, some giant efforts, and once again, I give Mr. Fister a lot of credit for working so diligently on our facilities and looking at what we can do through our permanent funds, and we have done a great deal. And that this looks at those next steps of moving forward, we still see a need pre-K through three, which is Nevin and Broadway, but the aspect of a building addition then at LT Ball site is where we would see that. And talking about earlier, when we were talking about facilities, that we are working very closely with OFCC, there is an L program, which I outlined what that was, the expedited partnership plan, and so we are, as a district, are looking very strongly, and I know the board is looking very strongly at pursuing all those possibilities, and really trying to solidify what is our direction as a district right now.
And so the point of this action tonight is just kind of a statement of our intent, is that, I wonder how you classify it?
Yes, because I think we talk about it a lot, we talk through it a lot, we gather a lot of information, but at this time, I think we know that if we are approving this this evening, we're saying this is the direction that as a board and as a district that we're headed, that we're planning for, there's a lot of work still to be done, but that this is the focus and direction that we're planning to pursue, based on all the improvements that have occurred at our middle school, those that did occur as well at LT Ball, some additions even, improvements with lighting and things at our high school, of really keeping those buildings in the best shape possible, but knowing that we do need facilities very seriously at our pre-K through three building, Nevin and Broadway.
So I would say that, I mean, one of the things we heard when the bond issue went down at Broadway was we didn't have a complete plan, and I believe that this, along with what we did this summer at middle school, allows us to actually show that we do have a complete plan, we've got some more work to do, as I was about to say, but we've got a complete plan on our facilities that we believe is going to meet the community's needs for the next twenty-five years, and we're going to work to complete that out and present it to the community so that they have an understanding of where we're going, where we would like to go with this, with our facilities in the near future.
So I'm wondering when we might schedule some community engagement to get some feedback on the proposal of this project, and maybe get some information so that we can answer some more of the detailed questions that accompany this project. Timeframe, cost...
I think that's, I don't know that I can tell you some dates tonight, but I think that that is the next steps that will be, will include having some community engagement sessions with the community to present the master facilities plan and where we're headed.
Go ahead, you'd be sorry.
Sorry, I apologize for having this one, but we use the word abandoned in here, I just want to make sure it's also clear that in this statement, we're not saying that we're literally abandoning the entire site.
Right.
Let it revert to its state of nature or something, I mean, as far as what happens with that site is still to be determined, and it's...
Which would be something to address during community engagement.
We're binding the idea of using that site for PK through three.
Correct, for building at that site, yes, yes, and that is strong language, isn't it, I would agree.
It sends a message.
It's to abandon the idea of...
Yes, that's right.
How about replace instead of abandon, we're replacing that idea.
Well, I wanted to piggyback of what you said, Sam, one of the reasons, one thing we did hear from everybody is, what's your master facilities plan? One of the reasons, one thing we do hear from everybody is, what's your master facilities plan? And that's one of the main reasons I ran for school board is I wanted to see a master facilities plan. I wanted to see a five-year, a fifteen-year, and a thirty-year. Now, we, this board and the prior board disagreed with some of that and that's fine, I mean, you have to go with the majority. But I will say that the work that we did this summer at LT Ball and middle school was because we have a master facilities plan now. We knew that the middle school was staying, so we said, you know, well, let's do what we can do. So, just to put that out there to the community, we are definitely in much better shape now with our master facilities plan than we were during the Broadway bond.
I think it's a testament to listening to what people are telling us, which is invest in those buildings that have life in them. And the PI study in November needs to be successfully passed in order for us to move forward on the master facility plan to decide what's going to happen next. In the meantime, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't hold community engagement, you know, sessions so that we can hear feedback on how to answer those more specific questions.
Well, I think we'll have more information, Gary said, in a month, right?
Sometimes in October, I would say.
Yeah, we want to have information to go forward with.
Well, we'll have that information, but we can put together some other information with regard to costs and timelines and stuff like that that we can start engaging as well as, you know, I mean, I don't know how many people really saw the plan that we had out to the community this summer or.
Spring, yes, spring forms.
You know, we need to get that back out, touted out there in the community. So, I mean, there's some, there's definitely some engagement sessions that can be scheduled, we just don't think we're ready to do that tonight, so.
So I did make a notation, community engagement date. We will work toward getting a date on the calendar.
All right, so I'm still looking for any more discussion on this?
No. My only other comment would be, we can also engage other stakeholders like our staff. So what would be the, you know, the plan to go to staff meetings to share the information as well? Would we go to staff meetings in October?
When I met with staff, all the staffs last spring, I assured them that we would be back, that it wasn't a one-time deal, that we will keep them in the flow of information, in the loop, getting feedback from them as we move forward.
Well, when we discussed this at the work session, did we, I'm confused, at the work session, did we not decide to wait until after November sixth? Am I wrong about that? I thought we said we were going to start disseminating information about this after November sixth, am I wrong?
I think we can hold some community engagement sessions to talk about, you know, this as a plan, as a project. And start getting feedback on how to answer some of those more specific detailed questions, like how do you get twenty-six hundred students through cafeteria in a timeframe? There were a lot of questions that came up in the spring.
Right.
That I think we should try to respond to those questions. And then, you know, our community members have questions about what will happen to Broadway. I know that we can't necessarily be the group that answers that question. People have a question about the cost, the timeframe, those are details that people are seeking. And so while we may not be able to disseminate all those answers at these sessions, we can at least acknowledge a hearing and work on giving information back.
And I would say that our engagement with Mike or Mr. Richley is leading us to a lot of those answers that we don't have at our fingers yet. So, within a few weeks, three weeks, we'll have most of that information and we'll be ready to roll.
A lot of that information is in that application. All the work, you got stuck, I mean, not stuck, but the amount of work that you've had to do to fill that application is going to answer all your questions. So, it's sort of a timing.
We're getting there.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Trying to move as quickly and efficiently as possible.
Well, I also want to remind us that we're listening to what people tell us. So it's not just that we're going out saying this is the plan, we want you to endorse it, we want to hear what people are saying as well. I think that's been a criticism of some of our neighboring communities who have tried to build new facilities and have failed. And so we want to make sure that we're investing the time upfront and hearing what people say instead of going to the polls again and maybe failing. Rather, listen to people.
That's why I've been, correct, yeah, you're on the right page, that's why we've been having these forums. And we're definitely going to do it, I just think, right, you know, right now with the application, strategic plan, it's just a matter of, you know, there's only so many resources to go around, but we definitely, this is a priority. We just, you know.
We're saying the same thing.
We can only do so much, right?
Right.
It's important, we're going to get to it, but everybody's working so hard right now, there aren't enough hours in the day.
Yeah, I think to answer your question about waiting till November sixth or after the election, I don't know that we need to wait till after. I think that, but on the other hand, I don't know that we're going to have a lot of information that's going to be ready for them before then because there's stuff that we still are researching. But I would think that the community would see some type of community engagement session around that election, whether it's a little before or whether it's a little after. But I want to publicize that we are moving forward with community engagement. And we want them involved and we want to hear what they've got to say. So, there's nothing wrong with actually saying now, community engagement session is going to be coming.
I agree.
And we're going to do them as soon as we're ready to get them out there.
Right.
There's no timeline that we're going to hold to at this point for the election before we can release any additional information.
Right, I just want to make sure the employees that are, you know, the ones responsible for doing those presentations got the information that, you know, if they already have this much on their plate and we throw another large project on there, you know, as an employee, we need to be respectful of what they're doing as well, so, you know, just coordinate, you know what I'm saying? Just coordinate that with what objects we're already working on for that specific employee or people that are involved in that.
And I think the next two weeks, just the information that's able to get them that next step with the ELF, once again, because, you know, we're involving several of the same team members, so we need to work on that. So, we'll get a date, a projected date on the calendar and kind of begin floating that. And I'll probably try to have that for you for Friday board update, a projected date, and start checking calendars and then we can go from there.
So did you?
Be careful, well.
Maybe I'll, I'll send you the information only.
Well, if we have some dates.
I guess what I'm worried about is we throw a date out there and then we don't know what information we're going to present. Let's try and have a date along with some information that we want to have in that community engagement session. Let's not just create a date and then try and figure out what we need, we need to, those kind of work hand in hand.
I think we have plenty of information to share. And I think there's really several sessions that we have with the information. And once again, a lot of it is gaining their feedback as well, yeah.
Right.
Discussion more?
No.
Call roll please.
Oh, not that happening. All good. Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
All right, item M, recommendation to approve approval of resolution declaring transportation impractical. And there's an attachment of that.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion is second, Corinne and Teresa, discussion?
It's pretty self-explanatory, I thought.
There's some, I think the attachment's helpful and it is standard protocol.
Yep.
We have looked into it carefully and deemed that this is impractical.
Understood.
Call roll please.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
I'll pull off my rhythm.
Sorry.
Motion is approved.
Item N, this is recommend approval to accept three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars in grant dollars from the Miami County Foundation. And I would like to highlight those. That's Nevin Coffick Elementary for a mancap puppet performance and artistry in residence. At Broadway Elementary, a rock man presentation at Tipperary Middle School, that's Power of the Pin. And at Tipperary New High School, home building classroom safety supplies and tools.
I'll make the motion.
Second, the motion is second, Mr. Venters and myself.
Dr. Comf, I think it was from Tip City Foundation.
Oh, it's Miami County right here. I'm sorry and thank you for catching that. Okay, so that would be Tip, the Tip Foundation.
Tip City Foundation.
I was getting ready to look at my emails, but I'm not sure of it.
So I apologize, Tip City Foundation, we appreciate you and. Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm reading once I'm here and I did not catch it, I do appreciate Mrs. Robbins catching that for us, thank you. But great things going on.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Call roll please.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherly. Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes, and Mr. Heatherly votes yes too.
That motion is approved.
That's the quickest election ever, elected and told the board.
All right, item O, recommend approval to declare the nineteen ninety-five box truck as a surplus property and authorize the director of services to sell at public auction on govdeals.com.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
The motion is second, Teresa and Corinne, any discussion? Call roll please.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved. Any other new business? Upcoming meetings, our next regular Board of Education meeting will take place on Monday, October twenty-second. I'll be here at the board office at six-thirty PM. We also have a tri-agency meeting at the end of the month, October twenty-ninth. That will also be hosted here by the Board of Education, that meeting will begin at six PM. I have nothing else, I have an executive session planned. A motion to adjourn the executive session, which is authorized under Board of Education policy zero-one-six-six and Ohio Revised Code one-twenty-one dot T two G one to consider the employment of a public employee or official and to consider the investigation of a complaint against a public employee or official.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Motion is second, Joanne and Corinne. Call roll please.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved and do not anticipate any action as a result of the executive session. Take a five-minute recess.